Everybody come to the order please. We already start the meeting today, or tonight. We're going to have the pledge, and then we're going to have an invocation. That invocation is always invited a citizen of the community, or a member of the clergy to come and do the invocation. The invocation is for the benefit of the council. If you don't want to participate in the invocation, you don't have to. And whether or not you participate will have no bearing on what you've come here to do tonight. We also invite all members of the clergy, or anybody else that would like to come and offer to do an invocation, to come and do it. All you have to do is call the mayor's office, or the president's office, and tell us that you'd like to do it. So with that, we're all going to stand. And if you agree, so Julie Greason will lead us into the legislative meetings.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
You remain standing, please. We have Pastor John Lundey is with us. He was with us today at the Water Works, and he's with us again tonight. Pastor, we have, we had a terrible thing happen out there in Boston this afternoon. We don't understand it. I have a policeman that's a friend of mine in Dallas, Texas, and he called me on the way home tonight. And he said, "I've had probably one of the most bad, or worst days I've ever had." He said, "A man shot his girlfriend's baby in her stomach to kill the baby. She was seven months pregnant. Then he turned and shot a police officer in Dallas, a very close friend of his." So, we live in troubled times, and we ask you to pray for our troubled times, and remember those people in Boston. Thank you.
Heavenly Father, we thank you, Lord, for allowing us to be here tonight, Lord, under your guidance and your counsel, dear God. The meeting is set to be prepared, and be handled by you, dear Lord. Lord, we come to unite with aching hearts for the people in Boston. From what I understand, there's been a few people killed, many, many people injured in the hospitals, dear Lord. And, Lord, we just ask that you be able to lift these people up, lift up their families, and for those who don't know you, dear Lord, that maybe they will have a way to come to know you through this tragedy, dear God. And, Lord, also, this police officer in Texas, the, as Mayor Urban has mentioned, a child was shot while still in the womb of its mother. And, Lord, that's just a terrible thing to happen. And we don't always understand these things, and why they happen, but only you know, God, and only you're the ones that are able to deal with it. So we lift this family up, we lift up the police department of Texas, as they also had an officer get shot. Lord, we bring this all to you, and lay it down at your feet, and ask that you deal with these things, because you can't imagine, we can't imagine, the significance of what is really happening, only you can. Lord, I also ask that you be with the people at this meeting tonight, Lord, and guide them, direct them, in all decisions that are made. Let them run this city according to your will, dear God. I'm thankful to be here in this city, although I've only been here a short time, I enjoy it, I like it, and I'm glad that you brought me here, dear Lord, to pass to this church, and to be amongst these people. I lift everything up in your name, and with praise and glory, in the name of Jesus Christ, our Lord and Savior. Amen.
Thank you, Pastor. Paul, the official start of the city council meeting. First order of business will be to have a little call.
Councilwoman Rich?
Present.
Councilwoman Weber?
Present.
Councilwoman Chomol?
Present.
Councilwoman Navi?
Here.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Present.
Councilman Creach?
Present.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Here.
Let the record show that all seven council people are here. We have a pick and roll, and they are able to do business. Next order of business will be to turn off our phones to the vibrant lights, over the no ring. Everybody take a, do that, and then we will have the reading of the minutes of the last meeting.
How does the acceptance of events present?
Second. We have a motion on the floor to accept the events as they were presented. Are there any additions or corrections? None appearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay. We have the honor tonight to have a group of young people with us. This is the Robotic Baddocks Team from Connersville High School. They have just won the award. Who's going to be the spokesperson?
I am stepping up as a mentor, and I have three students with us that have agreed to speak tonight.
Okay, come here to the thing, and each one of you give your name, and what your position is, so we understand it.
I am Brady Price. I am assistant team captain of Connersville Robots Hardens.
I'm Brooklyn Nicholson. I am a president of the robotics team.
Hi, I'm David Cox, and I'm the driver of the robot of the Connersville.
And my name is Shannon Shields, and I am a mentor for this fine group of young students. We are here today to ask for the city of Connersville to step up-
Before you do that, tell them what you won last week.
Last week, at Rolls-Hulman Institute of Technology, we passed those out, please. We were able to compete between the fourth to the sixth to win what is called the Rookie National Award, Rookie All-Star, which means they have the chance to go to our national competition, uh, first, down in St. Louis, Missouri. And that's the reason that we are here today. That is our team picture, as well as the award that is currently on display in Mrs. Flowers' office. The kids were able to present this award with her, or to her.
There you go.
And so today, we come here asking you for sponsorship. We have $8,000 that we need to raise, in order to send these people to St. Louis, so that they can compete. The robot and their tools are already there, and waiting on them to arrive.
When will they do this?
They will do this April 24th through the 27th. And now I'm going to turn it over, and let them tell you more about it.
Well, um, this is our first year as a rookie team going to the Nationals at Rolls-Hulman. We competed against 52 teams, and won the Rookie All-Star Award. Nationals is a very big, um, a very big deal to go to. We're one of 10 teams from Indiana, out of 354, to actually be allowed, be given this opportunity to go to Nationals in St. Louis, Missouri. So it's, it's a very big, very special thing for us to be allowed to go to this event.
Go ahead, Ms. Nicholson.
Alright. Well, um, we were judged in some key areas for the Rookie All-Star Award. We were judged in GP, which is gracious professionalism, which means if anybody needs a tool, or anything like that, we are able to help them. We are very nice with it. It's very team oriented, so you have to be, you know, in alliance with your team, and be able to accommodate other teams, and help them out as well, on top of dealing with your own team, and making sure everything is ordered. We were also judged in knowledge of STEM coursework, which is like science, what is it, science?
Science, technology, engineering, and math.
Engineering and math. I couldn't remember them in my brain, sorry. But, uh, those are things we do at the school. And FIRST was really, really looking for that this year, with the knowledge of these courses, and taking action in these courses, not just knowledge of it. We all participate in some type of class in, on the team. We were also judged in graphic design. Our shirts, or our logo, was actually drawn by one of our members, she's back there, and, which was great, because judges really liked it, because we, it was a student that created it, it was a student that came up with the idea. It was not a mentor, it was not an adult, this was totally on our own. So they were very, very impressed that we did that. Pursuit of college careers, every single one of us have a college plan, and are planning on going to college at all costs. That's kind of the reason why we do FIRST, for the grants, and the scholarships that we can get for doing the program. There are $16 million worth of school scholarships given out this year alone, and every year it increases. We were judged in safety. Safety is a very big deal when you enter a regional, or a, the national, you are automatically, automatically supposed to wear safety glasses at all times while you're in the pits, gloves, stuff like that. We actually have a safety manager, he is back there in the white shirt, JT, which, you know, make sure that we are safe at all costs, you know, make sure if we have, if we are touching the robot or in the pit, we have gloves on, making sure if we are using a piece of machinery, there's an adult present, making sure that we're using it safely. We were judged on our spirit, how well we, how excited we were, and our enthusiasm and everything. We are based on basic engineering principles, which is the robot itself, and the way we design it, and the way we chose to design it. And, as well as our robot, that's what it says, and world leaders. We have to make sure, when we talk to the judges, because the judges don't want to talk to the adults, they want to talk to us, and see where we, and what we get out of it. And, they want to find leaders, they want to make, they want to name a team that's going to be very prevalent in FIRST. They want somebody that's going to put their best foot forward, and show FIRST off the way it's supposed to be. And that is some of the things, the key areas we were judged in for winning the award that we won.
Um, practice wise, we practiced three to five days a week, for about three to five hours. While building the robot, we were basically at Connersville High School from eight to eight, which was very hard on all of us, but we did pull through, and, um, all of our mentors, Shannon, Kevin, it's just hey, everybody that helped us, it was all volunteered. They, they didn't have to stay with us, they didn't have to, but they chose to, because they believed in us. Um, I can only imagine that some of the thoughts running through all of your minds are, how is this gonna, you know, affect them in the future? The answer to that question would be, um, we can use what we learn in this program in everyday life. This program is teaching and giving valuable future experience, that they can use and work, workforce, and, and everyday experiences.
We're, we're taking the experience that we're learning from, um, engineering, from creating the robot and designing it, to, um, the electronics, because we actually build the program to have the robot run, just like you program a computer to work. And then we also learn how to cooperate with thousands of other kids. There's going to be 500 teams, anywhere from 10 to 30 kids, on a team at Nationals. And so you have to be very friendly, very, you know...
Willing to help others.
Well, I'm, I'm impressed that, that you're able to come and make this presentation. I presume that's the robot right there in the middle?
Yes.
Okay, I wish you'd have brought-
He's kind of hidden.
What's the robot's name?
Robo Spartan. Robo Spartan for this year. Usually we name it every year, but this year, since we are, this is our first year affiliated with the school, we thought it would be very appropriate to call it Robo Spartan, so...
I wish you'd have brought him or her up here.
It's, it's actually in Nationals.
Yeah, it's actually-
It's already there.
It is in Saint Louis.
We had to-
Did it program itself to go there by itself?
Well, I don't think the battery would last that long, but I think we could get it done. But, um, it, once, once we got the award, we actually had to bag it up, and put special tags on it, and send it off that day. And they had to inspect it, and make sure that there were no tears in the bag, to make sure that we didn't, um, change it while it was supposed to be locked away, because once the game, which is called Ultimate Ascent this year, um, was released on one day, all across the world, on NASA TV, and every team all across the world has six weeks to build this entire robot. And so, that's, that's how they make sure that no teams get extra time, or not enough time. So...
Sounds like a peace cake to me.
So what did it do?
Um, this year, we actually played frisbee. We, uh, our, we had a tippy table mechanism, which we were allowed to feed four frisbees, which is the max amount, number, the max number of frisbees allowed, and drive over to the other side and dump. And then a lift mechanism, it had to climb a tower. And the tower is 90 inches, like the tiers, but we only did the bottom one, it's the easiest.
So we threw the frisbees?
No, ours didn't, it has a tippy table, which means it basically, it basically dumps them. It's, it's a bucket.
It's a plexiglass box that has a motor connected to it.
I know what plexiglass is. You got it. I'm done after that, guys. It's alright, it's alright.
And our lift mechanism consists of two hooks that spin up, well, the hooks themselves spin up, but they lift up, and then it's got a bar that goes across that allows us to attach on the bar, and then once we retract the motors, it lifts the robot off the ground.
You're going to have to just bring it in here.
Well, once, once we get back-
Once it's done, yeah, okay.
Yes, because, uh, when it's bagged intact, we are not allowed to modify anything whatsoever. Once we won that award, and we were inspected the final time, once we bagged that, we are not allowed to touch it again, unless it's to load it, to ship it off. We are not allowed to touch anything inside that, we're not allowed to change programming, nothing.
So, it's-
So...
It's a final deal.
Yeah, it's kind of a big thing. And if anything happens, like, for instance, if our bag was to get a rip, or anything like that, we would, we could potentially get disqualified, because that's, that's a big deal. So...
Well, I, I'm just impressed. I came in here feeling kind of low, after watching TV a little bit while I was home for dinner, and you guys have buoyed me up, and encouraged me, that every time I see you young people come here, and I learn what you're doing, I get excited. What I'd like for you to do is line all your people up here along the thing, and let the news examiner get a picture of Daryl wakes up over there and gets one. Counsel, Melissa's got pins out there. President of the council, Mr. Gary Weber, if you'll lead the pack. And Counsel, will you go with the pin?
Follow me, Fran.
Pin all these kids, go, go on, Counsel, go.
Where would you like?
Our old fourteen of you fellows here.
They're following you guys.
Um, yes, everybody but one mentor who couldn't be here.
And one student. All together, we have 10 members on our team, as in student members, and we have four mentors.
Go ahead.
So, which is, and actually a small team for FIRST, because most teams range from 10 to 20 to 30, so we actually have a very small team.
And the ones that could be here tonight are actually at our school medical school, we're trying to, so we're here at the, as well as-
Supposed to be up there.
How did you ship the robot?
We took it out to FedEx. As soon as it arrived here, we had two days to build crates, put it into the crates, call FedEx, and they come get it. They come and pick it up. They like the picture, guys.
Yeah, you have to turn around for the picture.
Yeah. Uh, we currently have-
The school was nice enough to loan us $5,000 to pay for registration. And so far, between sponsorships, um, a couple new sponsorships, and that, we have been able to raise about $900 so far.
So you have $5,900, you said?
Yes.
They said $60, okay.
Okay. Get them the way you want them, Dave, or, uh, come on.
Me, Dan.
There, there.
Let's see, we need to-
I'm the girl, Daryl.
Yeah, up, up.
That's close.
Nice, taller, uh...
That's close. Lynn, what's her name?
There they are. There we go.
Fred.
Fred. Would you guys like to tell them all your names while we're standing up here? Introduce yourselves, please. Just line up and introduce yourselves on the way back to your chairs.
Like I said, I'm David Cox, I'm the driver.
My name's Sean Bannon, I work on, like, the robot, and help build it.
My name's Morgan Hart, I do like the artwork and the designs for shirts, and pins, and all stuff like that.
I'm Brittany Fish, I'm the secretary, and I'm the electronics team.
I'm Brady Price, I'm in charge of programming, and, and assistant team captain.
I'm Brooklyn Nicholson, I am team captain, also head builder.
I'm Andrew Murray, jack of all trades, master of none.
And quality control.
I'm Jake AT Tony, I am safety net manager, and belt, old team member.
Kevin Murray, mentor.
Maddie Kielinski, I'm the high school team sponsor.
And then Shannon Shields, mentor.
Okay, well, we appreciate it, let's give them a hand. Thank you for coming. Daryl, did you get a good picture?
Yeah.
Well, it is.
We would like to know now if the city of Connersville would like to own this place?
How much have you already, how much have you already raised?
So far, um, the, we have roughly $6,000. Um, the school was nice enough to loan us $5,000, which we're going to pay back through fundraisers and that throughout the summer. But $3,000 is what we have to have, just to get them there. That is a minimum that we can welcome-
So how much do you have now that yours is not loaned to you?
Um, about, about $900.
Counsel?
I know that we donate the $1,000, well, the $1,000.
They need the 31.
These are our sponsorship forms, that have some of our different levels.
They need, you just need $1,000, right?
No, three.
We would love to be able to get three. If the city of Connersville can help us out with the $3,000, we are sure to take the kids to the national event.
Sell your radios.
So...
You'd have been me.
And then we will fundraise, and everything to pay the school back.
Right, you are.
Just a second. Couple more of those, thank you. That's the reason she is president, she is my right hand, with all the paperwork. Um, and just so that you guys know what kind of work that these kids actually do, they actually came together to write a $3,000 grant this year, for Tech Point Foundation, that allowed us to get the materials and tools that we needed, just to be able to get this accomplished. Several of them spent an all-night session finishing up that grant, just so they could do it.
All right, did you make that in the form of a motion, Nancy?
Yes, I did.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. We have a motion on the floor that we make a donation of $1,000 to the robotics team to try to get them to the Nationals. That'd be about a third of what they need, uh, that would help a great deal.
Yes, we need it by the 20th, to pay for the hotels. This month. Which is here.
On advertising for a public hearing, where'd you want that to come from, Nancy?
Well, I leave that up to you, darling.
Where do you want it to come from?
Where should it come from?
Oh, we can take it on the riverboat, or...
I don't know what we have left in the-
There's enough in there, we can do it, or we can take it from the general fund, but I think something like this ought to come from the riverboat, yeah.
Right.
Okay. On Nancy's made a motion, we have a second, to take $1,000 out of the riverboat fund to pay for this. We would have a public hearing at the next meeting, and then we would do it, but I'll advance some of the money, and we'll get it done somehow here. We'll, we'll get it done, so we can get it in a timely fashion. So, in favor of the motion, all in favor, say aye. Is there anybody opposed? We will advertise and do the next meeting.
Thank you very much.
And, uh, we will see that you have your check. What's the date you need to sign?
Uh, by the 23rd. Um, if, if it's at all possible, by the 22nd, to give our school time to process it.
Okay, give her the information.
Yes, you're right there on this paper, tells you where to send it to, who to make the checks out to. Something else that the kids get involved with, alright.
Thank you so much.
Counsel, please.
Yes.
Kevin Murray, mentor, I just wanted to put it in perspective, the operating budget for this club for the next calendar year is approaching $15,000. Each time we go to an event, it's typically a $5,000 entry fee. With that money, though, we typically get a kit of parts. Kit of parts, fulfilling, you know, industrial controls, the value of that kit could approach $10,000, $15,000. But again, coming from a small place, you know, Connersville, you know, the money is, 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 you know, definitely hard to come by. I believe each one of you did get a sponsorship letter. Obviously, we will be canvassing the community, but if there's any way that you guys could go ahead and forward those, maybe to somebody known to yourselves, who could sponsor the, uh, the, the club as well, we would be grateful, and, uh, or, or please contact, you know, the mentors in Mrs. Kielinski, which you see at the bottom of that, we would like to approach them directly, if you think that would be more appropriate.
We will certainly do that. Let me explain to all of you, we would love to pay the whole bill, but our money's very tight, and we have dozens of groups like you, so we try to help everybody a little bit. And that's, that's our purpose here, of course, we have to keep police, fire, trash collected, swimming pool open. So, uh, they, they are stretching their neck a lot, just to put $1,000 into this tonight, and, uh, I hope you appreciate that, and we will get that out to you. So, we have to go through all the, the proper channels, and Julie and I'll see that that's taken care of. You're welcome to stay for the rest of the meeting, or you're welcome to leave, if you want to, it may get boring, or you may learn all about politics here tonight. So, we will move forward. Next on our agenda was-
Did we get practice, did we ever, did we get tonight?
Thank you.
Good luck in St. Louis. Thanks for having us. Thank you. Thanks for listening. Thank you very much.
You're welcome. We have Resolution 2013, this is a transfer from the general fund to the motor vehicle highway fund, $50,000.
Okay, Mr. Resolution.
Okay. Julie, we're doing this.
Our cash is down. Can we get our funds?
So, this time of year, these things happen. Any questions? I'll take a motion if-
I would like to make a motion, we pass that ordinance, Your Honor.
That's a resolution, yeah.
I'm sorry, resolution.
I'll second.
We have a motion on the floor, we pass pending ordinance, excuse me, pending Resolution 2013-07, putting $50,000 in highway, because we're low on funds, and we have our tax draw. So, any discussion?
Does that mean they go back in the general fund and put tax draw?
No, it'll just stay in.
Not meaning the $50,000, just go back in the tax draw, or just go there?
No, it'll just stay in.
This is from Coit, uh-
Yes. That money, usually the whole amount goes into the general fund, and every, once in a while, we have to disperse a little of it, a little of the funds when we get low.
Any other questions? All in favor, say aye. Anybody in the motion carrier, you got that big here. Resolution 2013-08, this is a reimbursement in the park, uh, and this is repairs to the dugout at the baseball field. We got $2,600, receiving, receiving this back in, because we're receiving money, so it should be an easy one to do.
I make a motion that we accept Resolution 2013-08.
Is any further discussion?
Will this pay to repair the dugout?
No.
Mike, no? What, how much extra we need, Mike?
We always have the $1,000, we just don't have them.
Since you brought it up. You said it. Now, um, we, I remember, right, last fall, a car ran into the restroom facilities at Industrial Park. I don't know if you recall that or not, but, um, it's been sitting there in shambles ever since, plowed with cover. What we're trying to do is, um, if anybody familiar with Industrial Park, all the buildings are in pretty bad shape.
Yes.
So, we, we're trying to, we're receiving, um, quotes right now, for one building, two house restrooms, concession stands, scorer's booth, and a little storage area, and do away with all the other buildings.
Good idea.
So, this insurance check will cover some of that. We're applying for a $10,000 grant through the foundation, and we also received money from another source.
Yeah, we got $10,000 from UEA.
Yeah, UEL.
And we got $3,000 on, and some on cents from the wreck when the pickup truck hit it. We're aiming toward $21,000. So far, that's our best quote on, on the building, but-
$21,000 on the entire building?
Well, that's just to do the building, we still got a lot of work to do inside, but we're trying to get more quotes.
Right. So, and part of that project is also the, um, the foundation, they were interested in putting new sidewalk around the park, for the neighborhood to get to the playground equipment, to get to the basketball courts. for the neighborhood to get to the playground equipment, to get to the basketball courts, not just, you know, the softball stadium. So, that's kind of what we're working on right now. I think, um, I talked to a couple of the builders today and they're supposed to have numbers for me Monday on these, uh, not quotes, but new quotes. That's kind of where we stand right now.
Thanks, Mike.
Because we got so darn much work to do, I mean, we got to finish nine-one-one, we just got so many things to do. Uh, we, we'd like to get the building constructed and then just do what we have to do inside. And of course, spring is upon us and they're starting to use the...
Yeah.
Okay, do we have a motion on that? I can't remember.
Yes, a motion and a second.
A motion and a second. Okay, is there, uh, any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. That's a resolution, so it's done. Pending ordinance thirty dash ten, this is a salary amendment for the utilities. And if you remember, we got into a contractual difference because, uh, we promoted a man that had the credentials. We promoted him up to the water treatment and we have a grievance filed against us by, uh, somebody down at the waste treatment plant because they had more seniority. Uh, rather than go to arbitration, the unions suggested to us that we just go ahead and pay the man down there, uh, I think, what, fifty cents more on the hour? And we, uh, do the same thing up here and it would come out all right because then the man down there didn't lose anything by not being transferred. And we settled the grievance, we didn't have to go to arbitration and, uh, this, the, uh, border works agreed to it and we have to have this salary amendment in order to make that all happen. I talked with the union today and soon as we get this done, that grievance will fall by the wayside.
Now, was this done to keep from losing the grievance?
This was done to keep from even going to arbitration.
From going to arbitration.
We lost, or we wouldn't have to go to arbitration.
That was the next step.
I'm familiar with that.
There's no discussion, I move pending ordinance thirty ten be passed on first reading.
Second, Ben.
We got a motion and a second. There is discussion. Tom, you seem puzzled by that. Bring it forth.
I'm not sure what we done.
Okay. What happened was we needed a man at the water treatment plant retired. We needed to put a man with credentials, a W-three...
WT-three.
WT-three license up there. We had a man that got a WT-three license on his own, did his schooling, did his, the number of hours worked. He was ready to move in there, but he didn't have the seniority that the older man, the, in seniority down at the waste treatment. So, we put him into that job. We thought we were doing the right thing because he had the credentials. We know that when we're inspected up there, we have to have a man on duty up there all the time that has the credential. Now, if everything was like it should be, you would have an apprentice up there. We can't afford three people, we can't afford an extra apprentice up there. So this man got the credentials on his own, we moved him up there. They filed the grievance because they had more seniority down there. This man is well-qualified down there, so we decided, negotiated with the union, to give him each fifty cents on the hour. So nobody lost any money, only the city. And they dropped the grievance.
Okay.
We could go ahead and went to arbitration. And if you deny this, I guess that's where we'll go.
What's arbitration on?
Arbitration could cost you anywhere from a thousand to fifteen thousand.
It's expensive.
And you still might lose.
Yeah, the record is not good for cities in arbitration.
Arbitration's when you go to an arbitrator, we present our case, kind of like a, a trial, they present their case. This has been going on...
I know an arbitration.
Yeah. Well, you know better than I do, you've been there. But, uh, the water works chose not to go to arbitration. Last time we went, it cost us ten thousand dollars.
It's ridiculous.
Any other questions?
And I think we lost them too.
Yeah, we lost them.
We sure did.
The state law is, tells you what you gotta do and then when you've got a small staff and you try to do it, it doesn't work out. Are you ready for the question?
I thought we already had a motion.
We do. The question is when I ask you to vote. Let's have a roll call vote on this issue.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilwoman Weber?
Yes.
Councilwoman Chomel?
Yes.
Councilwoman Nobby?
No.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
We let the record then show it's five to two, so the motion carries. That's on the first reading. Would you like to suspend the rules?
So moved.
We got a motion on the floor to suspend the rules, it moved to third and final reading on pending ordinance, uh, number thirty ten. Uh, on suspension of rules only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Is anybody opposed moving forward or not appearing? Okay. I'll take a motion on third and final.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance thirty ten on, uh, salary ordinance amendment to the utility department. A roll call vote.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Chomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
No.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
No.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Okay, we still have the same vote, five to two, and the ordinance passes on third and final. Pending ordinance thirty eleven, additional appropriation, general fund EMS. This is for the schooling that we talked about last time. We have to have a public hearing here, so I will open a public hearing for discussion from the general public. Anybody like to speak about the, I'll give you a little history. We gotta send seven, like, people to school or they will lose their advanced EMT classification. Uh, we made an agreement with the union and with the people that we would send them to school. This time, if they don't pass the test, the next time they go to school and take the test, they do it on their own. They have to stay with the city three, three years after going to school or they have to reimburse the city where they're schooling. It's gonna cost the city some money because we gotta fill all those slots with part-time people on overtime or overtime during the time when they're in school and that we go on to school every Thursday. Uh, does everyone understand the history of it?
Was it seven thousand total or was it thirty?
No, the total was like four thousand something, but they have fifteen hundred.
Okay, that's right. That's right. But the, where the city paid, or the county paid half?
Thirty-five hundred for the county, yes.
Now, anybody out there want to speak on this issue at all? Not appearing, we'll pose a public hearing, we go to the council. Council on pending ordinance thirty eleven, what's your pleasure?
Your Honor, yes, I would like to make a motion we pass pending ordinance three zero one one.
Second.
A motion on the floor and a second that we pass pending ordinance three zero one one for schooling money, thirty-five hundred dollars for EMS. Any further discussion? None? Have a roll call vote.
Councilman Chomel?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilwoman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
You have passed pending ordinance thirty eleven, seven votes, it passes. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor and a second to suspend the rules. On suspension of rules only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Not appearing, you can move forward if you like.
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance thirty eleven, thirty-five hundred dollars for instruction for EMS. Uh, any further discussion? Not appearing, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. We have a like, uh, motion here, pending ordinance thirty twelve. I want the, after we, we talked to the people about the fuel and taking money from the riverboat to do this, um, the fire chief came to see me and also did Bill McDaniel because the building over there has some problems with being approved and we didn't want to approve this money and then the building not get approved. So I asked the fire chief and he was very gracious. He has investigated this and worked with Bill McDaniel, so I'll ask you to come and tell the council before they consider this ordinance, if you will.
We're asked, I'm asking you to table it till we get through plan and review. And where it stands right now, um, the state building commissioner called and, um, the building being in renovation, we have to bring it up to code and we feel that, that it's gonna be a lot of money, so we're asking you to table it till...
You talking the entire building has to be brought up?
Yes.
And right now they're just working on the one floor, weren't they?
Yes. So, uh, fire marshal's, um, office is gonna be in my office tomorrow afternoon, dealing on some other things, but that's where we're at with it. So I'm asking you to kind of hold off on it till we get it.
Have you talked to the principals of fuel? Have you discussed it with them?
Um, I made two phone calls, I haven't been contacted. I talked to Mike Hartzell on it. Him and Claire was in my office for a while and I explained to them that it would, um, be a good idea to see where the state stands on this before we put a lot of money into it and then come back and need more money.
Have you spoken with Holly on it yet?
And I called her a couple of times, I haven't heard from her, she's very busy this time of year, I'm sure.
Absolutely.
It's not that we don't want to help them, we just don't want to put money into a building that won't get approved.
I move that we table this issue.
We got a motion on the floor to table it.
Second.
Okay, we got a second. That we table this until we get further information.
Right.
And I do thank you so much for...
And the state is working on it.
I, I do appreciate you handling this and for warning me. Okay. Okay, on pending ordinance thirty dash twelve, this would be an ordinance where we would take ninety-four hundred dollars and give to fuel for the help of a fire ceiling in that building. On the tabling of this motion, uh, let's have a roll call vote. This is a motion to table.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Chomel?
Yes.
Okay, you have voted seven to zero to table it, so we'll go no further with that ordinance tonight. Pending ordinance thirty thirteen, uh, this is taking five thousand seven hundred dollars from park building materials to other buildings for the James Roberts Memorial Building remodeling and if you'll come forth and tell why we're doing it. You did it.
We just have to put the money in the right queue so we can spend it.
Oh, okay.
It's just because these are, um, where certain services where we hired somebody to come in and do it. When we appropriated money, we put everything in building materials, but we didn't put anything like the faith jet charge for some of the stuff and stuff. That needs to be...
Well, if you said it, it's gotta be all right. If I said it, it would be bad. Someday I'm gonna be very... Okay, everybody understand what you said, pending ordinance thirty thirteen, uh, it's a transfer of funds and I'll take a motion.
I'll make a motion.
Second.
A motion on the floor to pass pending ordinance thirty thirteen, taking fifty-seven hundred dollars from park building materials and to put it in, uh, building remodeling, James Roberts, contractual service. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. Would you like to suspend the rules and consider it on third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion to suspend the rules and consider pending ordinance thirty thirteen on third and final reading on suspension of rules. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? We can move forward.
So moved.
Second.
I got a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance thirty thirteen on third and final reading. Is there any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carry. That's good. Now, is there an H on your paper?
No.
Oh, gee.
There is now.
Huh?
There is now.
Yeah, we'll put an H on it.
All right, I'm going to, I'm gonna talk to you folks a little bit. I, I gave this speech this afternoon. My brother-in-law says that in two weeks I'm going to a home. That's because he's been the economic development president for the last week and he already says that I'm going to a home. Well, it's a nice one. But, we started with a company kind of by accident about ten days ago. Uh, this company sent us a notice to IEDC, Indiana Economic Development Company. And of course, we didn't have a, a director at the time, we still don't. And so I, one of the girls transferred the call to me and this company was wanting to go about the business on that to put a company in. And so I talked with them and answered all the questions, which you would do. And then, uh, I was down at my brother-in-law's because it was my sister-in-law's birthday and he hands me the phone and he said, we got another lady calling. Called on his phone because she had found out he was the new president. And it was, uh, this lady that works for Bingham, uh, her name is Jenny Massey. And she's kind of, I call her a headhunter, they call them site consultants. And they go out and represent companies and try to find a site. So, I want to start, in fact, I'd hire a site consultant and they would go out there and find this site. And she said, were you talking to this particular man in another state? And I said, yeah, I was. Well, how did you find him? And I said, I didn't find him, he found me. And, uh, anyway, after a little discussion, she said, well, we're working on that project, we don't understand why he's working on that project. And I said, well, all I did is, when he called and asked me, I just answered all the questions. She said, well, I want you to deal with me because we're the site consultants for this company. Well, to make a long story short, they're both working on it now and they've kind of mended fences and they're both working on it. So, I asked them if they would consider bringing, uh, somebody in to, uh, show, let us show the building. They usually bring the site consultant in. And we were expecting that in maybe about two weeks. And I think it was on Wednesday night last week, they called about four o'clock and said, uh, we're going to have the vice president of the company and the site consultant tomorrow morning at eleven-thirty. That'll be fine. So we jumped in the hoop and started getting a lunch together and I called Jovi, I said, Jovi, I need the lights on at eleven-thirty. We need the building looking as good as possible. And if you remember, it rained all night that night, all night long. Well, before nine o'clock that night, they called me and said, we changed our mind, we're coming at nine-thirty. Before Jovi eating any time to do anything when they turn the lights on. So we met him up there and we toured that land for about two hours, cold, wet, almost had to have an umbrella. And, uh, then we came down here and we had a lovely lunch for him. And the vice president sat at the table, Julie was there, so if I screw up on this, she helped me with it because I, I'm doing this from memory. It's not good. They basically told us that we got into the party late and kind of like it, it really wasn't gonna happen, but it was nice that we showed them the building and had a nice lunch for them. Did you say that's about what it went? Well, about, uh, five o'clock that evening, my brother-in-law called me and he said, uh, the two of them talked on the way to Indianapolis and said, maybe, maybe we can make that building work. And as we got into Thursday and Friday, we began to work more and more with them. And we now have been elevated to second place in the placement of this company. Uh, we got a southern state that's got a, they're number one, we're number two. So we're trying everything we can to put an incentive package together to lure them. Now I've been told that the owner of the company himself will come yet this week. I, I'm not sure yet what day. And, uh, we'll tour the building, you know, fix him a fine lunch and we'll try to work with him. One of the things happened during the meeting and I think it had some, something to do with it. Barton Barker spoke on behalf of the county commissioners. Ms. Y spoke on behalf of the county council. John Baker spoke on behalf of the city and what he could handle. And Julie spoke. Who did I miss? Oh, we had the state, we had a, a member of IEDC up there and he spoke. And then at the end, I just told them how gracious they had been and we were so glad that they came and to remember we were a hub zone and we get preferential treatment when we do, uh, government contracts, if that was important to them. He said that wasn't real important because they hadn't sold a lot of product to the government. And I just casually mentioned that we are an EB-five represented county. And at the same time, exactly when I spoke, the phone buzzed or something.
He was looking at his phone and he had a message.
And he said, this is strange, the CEO of the company is asking me if you're EB-five rated. And we were. So I think the Lord was with us that day. Forgive me if, I'm not supposed to cross politics and religion. Didn't it not happen exactly the same time? Didn't it not happen exactly the same time?
It was very coincidental, yeah.
Yeah. Well, anyway, on the way back to Indianapolis, they discussed and they said, "Well, maybe this will work." And then, we've been working with them. We started Friday, we worked with them Saturday. Uh, we've been doing everything. Now, what we're trying to do, they sent us a list of things that we had to accomplish. Naturally, the roof is leaking up there, like I said, so we had to worry about that. And it was a good night to test it because it rained all night. That didn't impress anybody. They wanted to know about the taxes. They wanted to know what we could do to help with that roof situation and what we would give and what the state would give. Well, originally, this was slated to be a project that would go to South Bend. And South Bend, their edge tax would be less than ours because their living, cost of living, their average cost of living is much higher than ours. So, they would get less money. Our cost of living down here is somewhat lower and our wage limit is lower. So, we think the state's gonna give us more of an edge tax, which will help us. But anyway, uh, we started to put some incentives together. And while they were here, they said they did not need the waste treatment plant. They did not need the power plant because it froze and busted anyway. All them boilers are frozen busted up there. And so, we decided we would look at doing a demolition on that part of the plant and see how much money the city could generate. And today, we were presented with two companies that looked at them, gave us, and we had a bid of seventy-five thousand on one and eighty-five thousand on another. And we didn't, we tabled it because that's the only thing we wanted to know is what would the incentive be? That if you folks in the Board of Works gave us permission to take that part of it down and they generated that money, that would be something we could say to this company. We will put this into the roof on your behalf. I said to John, "We gotta come up with some kind of a plan to sell this building to them." So, John developed this ordinance. First, it was a resolution today and the Board of Works passed it. And then John developed this ordinance. This ordinance, uh, you'll be able to read here just then because I'm passing it out. I didn't put it in your package. Number one, I didn't have it. We just made it a little bit ago. And number two, it would really confuse you just to read it. And then, the incentives that they have promised us is on the second page. And I'm gonna tell you, here's what they say they'll do for the city of Connersville if they choose, choose us and come here. In the year of two thousand thirteen, they will employ seventy-two people. Now, remember, this is already two thousand thirteen. We're already halfway through the year, almost. They will invest two million fifty-nine thousand two hundred in employees just in thirteen alone. They will put one million nine hundred and sixty-two thousand dollars into the building. In the year of two thousand fourteen, they will hire a hundred and ten employees.
Additional?
No, total.
Okay.
These are all total.
Okay.
Putting three million one hundred and forty-six thousand dollars into the community and invest five hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars into the building. In the year of two thousand fifteen, they will hire a hundred and eighty-two employees will be working there. And they will pay those employees five million two hundred and five thousand two hundred dollars. And they will invest one million one hundred and thirty-three thousand in equipment into that building. In the year of two thousand sixteen, they will be employing two hundred and sixty-seven employees, which will pay a payroll of seven million six hundred and thirty-six thousand two hundred and invest another one million three hundred and thirty-three thousand into the building and equipment. And then the year of two thousand seventeen, which is the fifth year, they will have three hundred and nine working there, which will be eight million eight hundred and thirty-seven thousand four hundred dollars into the payroll of this town and will invest one million eighty-four thousand. Well, if you've been jotting that down, it's about a fifteen million dollar investment over a period of five years. Now, the vice president that was here and he's vice president of operations told us, "This is a growing company. We know a little bit about it. We're not allowed to say the name. We're not allowed to say where they're from." But he said that when they project, they project very...
Conservative.
Always. He felt that these numbers could be as much off as forty percent, he thought. And remember, he's director of operations. So, John Baker put together a resolution for you, or excuse me, an ordinance for you tonight in a, in a fashion by which we could sell that building. Go on, pass these down and you get it in front of you. John Baker will take over and explain the whole deal.
Is this a fairly established company?
Very established.
And they want the entire building?
They don't need the entire building, but they're willing to take the entire building and they're willing to, uh, maybe sublet it and bring somebody else in.
Okay, thank you.
My math is a little slow. I heard the total dollar amount, but what kind of wages would those be for those?
About thirteen, fourteen dollars an hour to start. And there'd be some higher jobs with, you know, engineers and stuff like that. John, you go up the floor.
Yeah, why, um, now, this is the, uh, an ordinance that mirrors the resolution passed by the city, or Board of Works this afternoon. And it states that it's the desire of the common council of the city of Connersville to promote economic development and in particular, to offer the Visteon building for use by a manufacturing company to provide jobs for the citizens of the community and in further promote an economic development project pursuant to the Indiana Code. And the, uh, common council, uh, ordains that the common council of the city of Connersville agrees in principle to enter into the following agreement with the unnamed company for the sale of the Visteon building. Uh, that is, the city of Connersville agrees to enter into a sales contract with the city whereby the, with the company whereby the city will sell the Visteon building to the company on, on a form of a real estate contract. If the company meets the yearly projection, projected new employee jobs and the yearly projected capital investment amount set out on the exhibit, which was read to you by the mayor. And the real estate contract price will be four million dollars, but that amount will abate in the amount of twenty percent per year over a period of five years from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen if the company meets the above referenced yearly job and investment levels. If the company fails to meet the levels in any given year, then the twenty percent of the sales price will not be abated for that year and said amount will be due and payable to the city. If the company meets the projected new employee jobs and projected capital investment amounts for each year from two thousand thirteen to two thousand seventeen, the city will convey the Visteon building to the company by warranty D for nominal consideration. And there's a further whereas, it's understood by the common council of the city of Connersville that the sales contract agreement is subject to further negotiation. And the mayor and the city attorney are authorized to enter into further negotiations with the company and to report back to the common council of the city of Connersville on the progress of the negotiations. So, that's the essence of the ordinance.
Questions? We're going to sell the building for four million dollars. Am I correct?
Yeah, but it's gonna be, uh, a, an abatement process.
Uh-huh. Okay. We're selling it for jobs, basically. You're trading the building for jobs.
You're making everything.
That's what you're doing. But, you know, I, shame on me, but I still got this sting from this Carbon Motors thing we went through, okay? So, actually, they could have a balance in two thousand seventeen of a couple hundred thousand dollars. The rest would be abated?
They could all be abated.
Or all?
All be abated.
Okay, that's, that's the reason I ask.
Uh-huh. Yeah, it'll all be abated if they meet their projection.
Okay. So, we would, would we still have to pay the insurance on the building like we do?
No.
No. It'll be a land, a real estate contractor, they take over all maintenance payments, insurance taxes.
We have researched their taxes today. We have researched the cost of gas. We've done all that on their behalf. This is an incentive. We have no money to give anybody. No. So, it's an incentive that we're proposing to them. If they would accept this, and we don't even know that they will, that's when we would be back to you to say, "Hey, they said they'd do it." Twenty percent for five, okay.
But they will pay property taxes on it?
They will pay property taxes in two thousand...
Fifty.
Fifty.
If they take possession before March first of next year.
Go ahead, Nancy.
Actually, what we're saying here is that we're selling it to them for four million. However, we're really doing it to get jobs.
We're selling the building for jobs. Twenty percent per year.
Then we're gonna take away twenty percent for...
Each time.
Each year.
They're abating to the extent of two hundred thousand dollars a year.
That's always been our going life, is to get jobs there.
But unlike Carbon, which was a startup coming dead nothing, this company has...
Let me give you a couple of differences. Number one, Carbon was waiting on a federal loan to get their money. There is nothing. These people are gonna start thirty, forty, sixty days.
No matter what.
No matter what. These people are a going company. Secondly, um, there's a timetable here. Carbon, we were waiting for the federal loan and we didn't know when it was gonna come about. This is a five-year contract. This, at the end of five years, it's over.
They're on the hook for four million dollars. And they're on the hook for four million dollars unless they meet the...
No, no, they, they have the building for the jobs that they create.
If they create and do exactly what they say they're gonna do, they get the building.
For a buck. But if they don't, they'll four million dollars.
If it's not gonna go on and on, you're gonna know from day to day whether it's working or not working. But the bait would just be twenty, be twenty percent for a year?
Per year.
Because it's five years, that's your hundred percent.
Yeah, that's true, yeah.
And, and it's very simple. We just, and the state of Indiana's gonna do the same thing. They're gonna give them the edge tax on a performance. If they perform the first year, they're gonna get so much edge tax. They perform the second year, on up to five years. They're gonna come back to you and ask to abate the building, not the property, the building. I know they are because they've already asked. Okay, that's only one point four, am I right, or one point six? It's either one point four, one point six is what the building's appraised at. The rest of the land, of course, can't be abated because it's land. When they put equipment in there, which they're gonna put a lot of equipment in there, they're going to ask for an abatement on there until they get going. But this is an opportunity to get a going company in here and going. And it's tough to get them. If you have something else that we can offer, a bicycle or a couple of Rolls Royces or something, fine. But at this point, the city of Connersville has nothing to offer, only a building. And I want to tell you, and I think David will back me up, David Jobe. It's time we get out of the building. The building's deteriorating. They, they, they viewed it and they told us.
Do they need rail or the interstate rail? Does it help them?
I thought they said they did.
I, I don't think they do.
Somehow I caught that. I thought they said rail.
I don't think they do.
And, and if this is a go, then they wanna be in operation of some sort with employees by how long?
They're gonna employ seventy-two people this year, in thirteen.
And, and remind us of what our, like, yearly cost is to keep the building. I mean, like our insurance.
Our yearly cost to keep the building's over a hundred thousand dollars because we gotta pay the taxes, the insurance, excuse me, insurance.
Eighty thousand dollars in insurance.
So, we're thinking, and the insurance, like, ninety-two hundred a month? No, not quite.
It's about eight thousand.
Eight thousand?
Yeah.
So, that's over ninety thousand here. Then the utilities, we, we paid the utilities, what, fifty-two, fifty-five thousand a year?
It's probably between five, six, seven, eight thousand a month.
Depending on how many times Jobe turns the lights on.
How many we turn the lights on?
Could turn the lights on.
You were talking about two separate buildings up there that would help to pay for the roof.
Okay, on the back end of the building, away from the building completely, is a waste treatment plant because Visteon had to treat their waste before sending it down. These people don't have to. They don't have anything contaminated they're gonna send down there. East side. And then on the east... Then on the east side was the power plant, huge, uh, three times bigger than this room, with great big boilers in it. All this is salvageable. It's all metal.
Oh, okay.
And by salvaging it, we're gonna come up with seventy-five to eighty-five thousand dollars. We're gonna offer, this is gonna be our package.
To go to fix the roof?
Yeah. We're, we're a package. When they come on Thursday or whenever they come, we're gonna say, "This is what the city of Connersville will do for you. We're gonna offer this plan if the city council approves it tonight. We're gonna offer to use that extra money we get on that salvage to help fix the roof. We're gonna offer to abate that if the council agrees to it. We're going to offer to, uh, what else? Julie, help me. I got...
I just misunderstood how tearing those buildings down could get that money. It's for salvage.
And they don't want that there anyway.
Yeah.
They've looked at it and they don't want it there.
Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
I'm going to accept pending ordinance thirty fourteen.
I want to make one observation before you get a second. We, we have correspondence and it says the company, uh, expects they will have to make a substantial investment in the lighting, sprinkler system, and roof repair. So, I think it's important for us to know that they expect and anticipate having to make a substantial investment in the building itself.
Their, their type of operation takes a completely different sprinkler system than the sprinkler system was in there.
Second.
I have a motion and a second to consider pending ordinance...
Mayor?
Thirty of fourteen.
You have a question?
Uh, Mayor, I have a question. What happens like in the third year if they don't meet the criteria?
For that year, they owe two hundred thousand dollars.
Twenty percent of the four million.
So, if, if, on the third year, they don't meet, uh, number of employees and the investment put in, they have to pay... I presume they'll come back to the city? No, no, I presume that they would come and tell us like a regular abatement and you either miss that abatement or the city council would reconsider it and say, you know, "What are you gonna do?" There could be a negotiation or they, they could pay the whole two hundred thousand.
No, it's more than two hundred.
I was thinking of five hundred, five million. Eight hundred thousand.
So, they would have to pay that eight hundred thousand. You can't tell someone to do that, Ruby.
I just asked a question, okay?
You can't. Ruby, uh, we did, we did discuss the people. And the nice thing about this, these are not what you would call a labor or a menial task job. But the kind of company it is, they could take somebody, not, they couldn't train me in ten years, but they could take somebody like Kenny over there or maybe Joby and be questionable. Probably in a month, teach them to do what they want them to do. And yet, we can be proud of what's gonna be manufactured in there. We'll be very proud of it. It'll bring, it'll bring honor to the city of Connersville. I wish I could tell you the whole thing tonight, but if we did, every city in the nation would be ringing their phone tomorrow. We don't want that because we want them. This is a, this is a, a good opportunity for us and I say that with my tongue and my cheek. But we've got to research and look at every opportunity we get because they don't come around often. And when they do, we usually fail. Because we're too... Thorough than anybody I've ever taken through the building. We, we walked the roof, we walked every inch of the building, so. I, my feet were froze when we got back. I was soaking wet, and we still smiled and went down the road. And we thought we had lost everything. We thought we were out of the picture the way he talked. Would you have said that?
Yeah.
So you're off the bat.
He said right off the bat, your, uh, your building doesn't show very well.
Especially when it had, like you said earlier, it had to rain an issue so that night, and I called him, I said, I'm embarrassed, didn't I?
Mayor, excuse me, I misspoke. I, I thought, I said twenty percent was two hundred, of course, it's eight hundred.
I said two hundred too, John. We've been thinking too, too much. Too, too much.
Uh, Mr. Mayor?
Yeah.
Uh, before we get into the voting, um, I don't see a time, a time limit on this.
Five years.
Five years.
No, 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 sir, I'm sorry. When they agree to this, if they would agree.
They say, they wanted, they wanted to make a decision yet this week.
Okay. You understand what I, you understand my question?
Are we putting a time line on it?
Five years. If they sign the.
Like an expiration like we did?
Yes.
The other sale.
What I'm saying, I don't wanna pay insurance on this building for six more months is what I meant.
No, no.
They, they would have an answer prior to that is what I mean.
They'll either sign this, or they won't be in the business.
Okay, well, I meant that they would, they would get back with you within the next month or two.
What'd they tell you? They want to decide Wednesday or Thursday.
Actually, he said last week. When is our next, uh?
It's three weeks, four weeks.
No, when are we due to make any more big payments? Oh, we make insurance payments monthly. Oh, monthly, okay. We do that because of the kind of policies we have, so that it can be canceled then. That way we're not paying them six months worth of insurance. So is it worth putting a expiration at the end of the month then, or?
I, I don't think it really matters. I mean, they look at it.
They're gonna do it or not do it.
Yeah, they're gonna do it. If they don't do it quickly, then they're on the.
Yeah.
You know, we're working with the other company, John. Just as soon as they agree to do this, we will give them the name of the other company and hope they can get to negotiating together.
We'll put a hand up here. Roger, can we vote?
If you're ready for the question.
I'm ready.
Okay. We're gonna have a roll call vote, and I want you to take this very serious. Because if it fails, you can still tell me it's my fault. But if it passes, I want it to be your fault.
I knew that.
We got a motion.
We already have? It's been a while, I forgot.
We didn't discuss it yet. Roll call vote.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
Councilman Creach?
Yes.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilwoman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shoma?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
We have voted a hundred percent to pursue this incentive package, and I, I really appreciate what you're doing. Uh, this council has always been aggressive in, uh, working hard to get John, the, the people of this town, oughta, oughta really look at you because you have. It is an ordinance. We do have to do suspension of rules if we're gonna move forward and do it.
Second.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor on suspension of rules to consider pending ordinance number thirty fourteen. On suspension of rules only, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We can have third and final reading.
Some move.
Second.
We have a motion on the floor to consider pending ordinance thirty fourteen on third and final reading. Um, any further discussion? Nonappearing, we'll have a roll call vote.
Councilman Creach?
Aye.
Councilwoman Stevens?
Yes.
Councilman Rish?
Yes.
Councilman Weber?
Yes.
Councilman Shoma?
Yes.
Councilman Nobby?
Yes.
Councilman Montgomery?
Yes.
You have voted to accept this unanimously on third and final reading, and the ordinance passes. We'll be signing that. Let's see where we are on the agenda. I've kept for Mr. Sparks.
Public forum.
We have a public forum, cause I didn't have any other place to put him, so, Mr. Sparks, a very brief financial report. Hey, Melissa, turn that air in here in the hall down just a hair.
A little bit too far?
Just a bit.
Way too far.
You're welcome, I mean, okay.
You know, we've been paying to hit our house and home all winter when it felt like that, and here you folks are doing it on purpose. Well, thanks for having me here, and.
You should have a financial report in your folder. I don't.
Yeah, I got one.
Okay.
Yeah, hopefully you got a couple of documents in there.
Okay.
I'd like to say, before we get into that, just real quickly, uh, it's been fun sitting back there this evening because, uh, I hope it meant as much to you as it did me seeing those kids from school up here. Uh, you know, every time we hear, oh gee, nothing good going on here, uh, things like that just show how wrong those folks are. They're not paying attention to what's really going on at Connersville, or they wouldn't make statements like that. I was, I was proud for them, and I didn't know a single kid in that group, but, uh, that's part of Connersville. That's part of what makes us know, uh, Connersville's got a good future. Uh, the other thing I'd like to say is, it was also great to sit back there and hear that something is stirring once again for our building up there. And hopefully, something will come out of the steps you just took, so I think it's, uh, it speaks well of all of you that you're continuing to work on Connersville's behalf, so. With that, let me get into what I'm really supposed to be talking about. And I'm gonna make this very brief. I'm sure you've, you've felt like you've said that about long enough. You really should have two, uh, sets of papers. First one should be the bicentennial events and activities list. At first glance, this might look like the one that I think you got a month or so ago, but actually, this one has grown, uh, in fact, it has grown by two pages in the last month. Uh, through meetings that we continue to have with our day coordinators and event owners, uh, we have done a lot of refining of the list that you had previously. We've added events to it. We've put more detail in with those events. So as a result, the list you have before you now is fourteen pages instead of twelve. Uh, Ed Harold and I, uh, were comparing notes this morning down headquarters. Uh, we have several contracted music entertainment groups that are, are scheduled now to be part of the bicentennial. But there are also several other entertainment, uh, both in terms of music and in terms of just other forms of entertainment that are embedded in our various days. And we were just doing a rough count this morning, and we are up now to a minimum. We think there will be more, but we already have nineteen separate, uh, significant entertainment activities as part of the ten-day bicentennial. That's everything from, uh, major entertainment to, uh, in terms of, uh, music, to, uh, in some cases, interaction with, uh, kids through one of the, uh, contracted events here that we took on recently. That's in addition, uh, to all those other things you see listed from day to day. There are many things going on. Our goal continues to be truly to speak to that, uh, that, uh, that goal of having multiple things for everybody on any given day of this celebration. Uh, I think probably some of you are history buffs, uh, locally, uh, you know, I've done a lot of reading over a lot of years in terms of local things that have occurred in this community. And I, I think pretty, uh, directly, we can say at this point, there's never been any period of time in Connersville's history that I'm aware of in terms of history that would indicate there's never been anything even close to what's being planned for the summer at this point. Uh, the range of activities, the range of different entertainment, uh, in some cases, it will be informative, uh, events and activities that take place to portray the positives of Connersville and our great history. Uh, you know, we've had other major celebrations, but I don't think anything is ever compared with the total of what is coming this summer. So I think without question, at this point, we can certainly say it is going to be a very memorable summer. We think it's one that's going to raise a lot of people's appreciation for our community and citizenship, and all those things that we think are part of what's going to help this community move forward. Uh, certainly, if we get some good news concerning, uh, more jobs, we already had some good news in the last couple of weeks about a company and jobs coming into this town, so, uh, you know, our time we get a little news like that, just, it just makes us know that there is a future in our community, and, uh, and, uh, it's a bright one. And, uh, we're just, we're, uh, continuing to move forward. If you look at then, at the second, uh, set of papers that you have in front of you, it is our quarterly, uh, statement from our treasurer for the bicentennial. Pam Parrott from First Merchants Bank is our primary treasurer, and she put the information together that you see in front of you. And, uh, all I gotta do is get in the right report. There you go. Second page probably is the one that you will find most interesting. Uh, if you look there, about a third of the way down, it has two, uh, primary figures. The balance per the bank statement, uh, for the end of March, March thirty-first of twenty thirteen, one hundred and thirty-four thousand, six hundred and forty-seven dollars and seventy-nine cents. That was the bank statement. We know we have some checks that have already been written that are in the works. So the line above that is the one that really shows the true value of that account. Cash on hand, factoring in the checks that just haven't been processed yet. We have, as of March the thirty-first, one hundred and twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars and seventy-four cents in our, uh, bank account. The other several pages that go along with that report that I think you have, uh, are just explanation really of those figures. Connersville, as I've said before, standing before you and the other groups, Connersville has been very supportive. Uh, organizations from large to small have been very generous in supporting the bicentennial, and I think it's for a very simple reason. I think everybody understands that, uh, certainly at two hundred years old, Connersville, uh, deserves a celebration to recognize all that has come before us. But I think the reason why so many are being so generous is also because those same folks realize it's also important to our present and our future. And so the bicentennial from the beginning has been, uh, designed to speak to all three. And I've said before, we will recognize the, the, the past, but obviously, we wanna, we want to excel in the present and the future. I know you do as well. That's why you have taken steps such as the one you took tonight in trying to procure this business. And, uh, so I think hand in hand, we are showing others outside of this community that we still, still are very vibrant. We are going to have a celebration this summer to commemorate the past, the present, and the future. And, uh, as a community, all working together, I think we're gonna move forward. So if anybody have any questions about either one of those reports.
You might get the amount that you have, uh, in the bank, uh, you did this afternoon. The bank statement lists outstanding checks, um, one with twenty-six thousand, nine hundred and ninety-two dollars, seventy-four cents.
Okay, with that, uh, Mike, we, we have an obligation. It's a verbal obligation. The council, three years ago, gave to him that we would give fifteen thousand a year for the preceding three years, which would have been, uh, ten, eleven, eleven, twelve, and thirteen. Uh, since we have to go to a public hearing to bring the Riverboat money, the fifteen thousand dollars now, the final fifteen for this celebration, I would suggest tonight that we vote on going to a public hearing at the next meeting so we can issue that check. Uh, there's a lot of outstanding bills yet. Julie and I serve on the, uh, finance committee or the budget committee, and all these name brand entertainments have to still be paid, and they come out of that account. Uh, we're, we're being very careful so we don't go over the budget. Every, every, everything has a budget that was submitted and approved. And each, every other Tuesday, we meet at eight-thirty in the morning, and we go over these budgets, and then we're very careful. So tonight, uh, I would like to, and I'm sure Mike wants you to, uh, consider a public hearing at the next meeting, which will be the first meeting in May, and then we would pass at the second meeting in May, so that money would be available by the first of June to pay some of these bills. Uh, I'm willing to listen to you. I got a motion already, and a second by Demi. So we have a motion on the floor to give our third and final payment to the bicentennial committee out of the Riverboat Fund, which would allow Julie to have three weeks here to advertise for a public hearing, and we'd have our public hearing at the first meeting in May. So, um, we have a motion on the floor. Any questions? Any discussion? Do I have a, uh, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. We'll have the public hearing at first meeting in May.
Thank you.
Thank you. So we'll let you go home if you want to, but you can stay and listen to the rest.
Uh, you know, I might go home. Do you wanna mention the parade, what we talked about today, or do we wanna talk about it again, or are we done?
It's up to you. I don't like to make a guess, or, you know.
Let's do that in another meeting when it's not so late, cause we've got a lot of ground to go yet tonight.
Thank you, folks.
Thank you.
Mike.
Okay. Thank you. Uh, Mayor Chief, you wanna come up here and make your report real quick? You're very patient.
Um, we had eighty-nine total runs, one hundred and seventy-three hours, and on emergencies, eight inspections, seven investigations, three, three plans, kind of twenty-six and a half hours training. Um, we had the first fatality house fire since I've been chief in early March. Um, I've been real busy trying to get, um, all of our spring cleaning and everything done around stations, so. We've had a little bit of truck trouble. We've had a couple of problems with our engines. Uh, we used part-time firefighters for ten days, saving us about thirty, four hundred dollars.
Anything good on that?
Total cost of, uh, running your department, two hundred and thirty-seven thousand, five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. That's up some, but I realized there were three payday's.
Yeah.
The twenty-sixth, Fireman? Twenty-five.
Twenty-five and eight, seven part-time.
Okay, thanks.
Any questions?
Thank you. George, I'm sorry you had to sit there all evening. We appreciate you.
Thank you.
Appreciate you working on another project. EMS commander is at an emergency. He is out, and I think he's deep in the water tonight. He's, he's working on a project, so he should not be here. Park is here. We've already heard from him once, and hear from him again.
Always a pleasure, man.
I always kind of teach his report, because I follow him around like a puppy dog.
March, March report, um, revenue, ten thousand, three hundred and sixty dollars. Attaching the expenditures, eight thousand, three hundred and ninety-five. Um, activities, programming, our road to the parking lot, the soccer field is finally done. It's been a long process, but.
That's good.
Help with the street department, and, um, Jay, I went at the county highway. We finally was able to get that thing done.
And milestone, you're pretty.
The milestone. Uh, we have a little bit of help with it. We just, um, street department with a dump truck and a front loader, didn't have the right equipment with all the rain that we had. Um, so the highway department helped us out with, with the grader and able to get this done, so. Looks pretty good. Hopefully over the summer, we'll get the big lot done, but right now, uh, at least it will, we leave the parking problem out there.
Did you have Sharon send thank yous to all those people that helped us?
Yes.
That's all done?
Yes.
Uh, let me say a little bit about that. We got in trouble trying to grade that with a front-end loader, and I said something to Barton Barker, president of the county commissioners, and he said, yeah, we don't send a grader out there and we'll grade. Uh, when they got out there, they realized we, it was gonna cost a lot of money. So Milestone, at the same time, was tearing out another road. They brought in truckloads of fill, filled in our road, and then we took our blacktop grindings we took off the streets last year, put on there, and then Milestone brought their big, huge roller in and rolled it. And last Sunday, I went out there. The road is like a highway in there, and people were parked all over it. And, uh, so when you see your county commissioner, or you see your county councilperson, or Milestone, uh, that was all donated to us, and we really appreciate it. And, of course, we help the county from time to time when we need to, so. It's called working together.
Yep. Half our kids are county kids.
Yeah, half our kids that play soccer from the county.
Um, let's see, what else? East Street Hop, uh, you know, it was cool, it was two hundred and fifteen ten. I'd like to thank all the sponsors. We are now taking, uh, summer discovery registrations, um.
And you had a food giveaway up there too.
Yeah, that was this month, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
March. Um, grades first through six for eight, uh, ten dollar registration fee, it's fifteen dollars a day. And to give the person a phone call, eight-two-five, five-two-four-four. Um, I think over a hundred of the volunteers signed up, and we're expecting the same turnout this year. Roberts Building fundraiser is this weekend, April twentieth. Be there. Four to eight, eight dollars adult tickets, um, four dollars for children.
You guys have sold all your tickets, I presume?
Just a couple left now.
Out of twenty, you only got a couple left? Okay.
So we're hoping a big turnout this Saturday. Uh, Miller's, the Mill, I mean, the Roberts Building update budget, uh, right now, we're, um, running really tight, um, right now, um, sixty-two thousand dollars first of the year. Uh, we spent forty-five thousand right now. Uh, we have fifteen thousand dollars air tag for outside projects, sidewalks, paving, all that type of stuff outside, so we are, um, just finished, we got just a couple thousand dollars left to finish the inside, and we usually spend that about two days, no. Um, but you know, this one bad thing could happen and, and blow that, so we, we still got some things to do, but we're hoping to save some money outside.
Are you gonna be okay? I mean, you, you need, I mean.
Well, I mean, we're.
Now, I, I didn't get to tell you today, Mike, we've been too busy, but Lions Club's paying for the kitchen. You only got that money, except seven fifty. And today, the seven fifty came through from the Lions Club Foundation gave seven fifty. The kitchen's all installed. We gotta buy a stove and refrigerator. Uh, we're taking the ice machine from the Miller Building, cause it's old and it's twenty-two inches.
Pool.
Pool building, and taking it over to the, you know, that's why I'm going to home.
But we're, we're, we're close, we're close.
Well, I mean.
We're right there. Once something crazy doesn't happen.
I mean, do you, do you think, you know, like Gary Weber and I talked, do you think you need two dollars more, or?
Well, I think we wanna see what this fundraiser brings in.
Okay.
I don't, I don't count all the extra money.
Okay.
I try to go with the budget that we set, and with that extra money, that's awesome.
Okay.
So I try to live with that budget and all this extra money with the fundraiser and the.
The bathrooms are done. They're all done. They're finishing up some trim for the fundraiser.
We're still going to do the floors.
That's the big thing now, we don't know how much, I've been on Mike for a couple days trying to figure out how much the gym coat's going to cost us to do the floor. I don't know if that stuff's a hundred dollars a gallon, or if it's ten dollars a gallon.
It's expensive.
No, I don't, he's still...
But we're working on that.
It's expensive.
That's our next project, we're going to start sanding floors Thursday.
Thanks, Mike.
I want to tell you something, Don, we run a lot of money all being here crying.
Okay.
Michael.
But we're trying, I mean, we're trying to stay with that.
Any questions? Nope.
I would like the press to realize that Lions Club applied for a grant from the foundation, a grant we got word today, we received a grant, seven hundred and fifty dollars toward the kitchen. Made a total of how much did they put the kitchen in?
Three thousand.
How much?
Three thousand.
Okay, and they also have told us now they're going to put five thousand into the pavilion because they want to enclose those bird catchers on the inside with the white siding. They want that all enclosed, so they're going to pay for that. Street Department, Street Department, Street Department.
Police Department, Murd, he's going to be...
Runs this meeting here, you know. The Street Department.
Okay. You can, thank you, David.
Thank you, David, because you're just excited to be here.
You got your thingy bag. The only thing I have to say actually tonight is, I just want people to start paying attention and playing by the rules on the large trash and the yard waste and that kind of stuff. Just do what you're supposed to do, we'll get along fine. We have renters and people with big buildings that want to clear anything out and put it out way early, and they're not playing it fair, and it's just not...
That shocks me.
Well, it doesn't shock me, but I just want to hope that one or two of them are listening right now, is all I'm hoping for. So maybe we can cut some of that down instead, like on Thirty Second Street, the pile's been there for, you know, since the first of the month. There's no reason for that. And you should give them free rent for a month or something until it's time to set it out. It makes the town look bad.
And put your trash can out with the silver thing facing the road. And don't pile it full of stuff all over the top and close the lid.
And expect us to pick it up off the ground after you piled it so high.
I think we need to order all new, bigger ones.
That's the biggest thing.
Yeah, but we've got the small ones ordered, and they should be here hopefully by the first of May, sometime along there. So we can, those people, we still get those people to call and want to know where they're at, so.
Good report, Dave.
Okay, have a nice day, Fireman.
The street department cost one hundred and thirty-five thousand two hundred and sixty-two dollars and one cent last month.
We do a lot of work on fire trucks.
We had one thousand forty-three law reports, twenty-one citations, one ordinance violation, seventy-two warnings, nine personally injury accidents, forty-five property damage accidents, zero fatalities, and we made a hundred and thirty-nine arrests. And on my budget, my overtime was up a little bit, but that was because vacation started, and also we're still lower than we were last year. And anybody got any questions about my budget or anything?
No.
When you do these raids, when you do these raids, you know, the meth raid, you know, I don't know, is it, how does that, does that cost?
Does it cost?
I mean, I don't know how that, I mean, when you plan it with the state and all that kind of stuff, there's a, do you incur...
Overtime?
Yeah, increased fees or anything like that? I was just...
Well, some of that, but, well...
Does the state reimburse you for that? I mean, for the extra time you spend involved in?
Involved in what?
They helped the state police carry on the...
Seven Street.
No, we have OPO, and we get money back from that, and a lot of times, that overtime sometimes is compensated for that.
Me saying, when we have one of these drug raids, yeah, it costs because we do pay some overtime. It costs.
Yeah.
It costs.
Well, I mean, that's fine, I mean, you need to do it.
I quite understand your question.
I didn't, I didn't stay...
But more bluntly, like the mayor does.
We're going to the same home.
I got a... Probably still a couple rooms.
That's good.
I'm probably there with you.
Frank, you want to go to a different one?
Find out where these guys are going.
Counsel, I got a little thing I'm just going to talk about tonight, and I'll come back in and talk to you next time around, but I have a building, I have a court order here to do something with a building that's in town. It's on A Street on the curve over there, it's a, I think it's four-twenty-five West Eighth. It's an old brick apartment building, and it's dilapidated, it's falling down, and so we got a court order a few years ago to tear it down, but to tear it down is going to cost some money to tear it down. And so I'm going to have to get some bids on tearing it down, not unless we, I don't know what else to do with it. Now, it's one of those deals where we have a lot of hell homes in this town that we're dealing with, and we either board them up and we put liens on the properties, or we tear them down, put a lien on the property, or whatever, you know. But John, we dug this one out the other day, and it's been on the books since two thousand and ten to be demolished or whatever, and we're talking anywhere from ten to twenty thousand dollars. It's a two, is that two or three, is that three-story? Two-story? So it's, I'm just padding up here, and I'll get some estimates on what it would cost to tear it down. Now, if the council don't want to tear it down, then, well, we'll have to cross another bridge then, but something's got to be done with some of these buildings. We can't tear every house and building in town down, it's been deemed, you know, a junky house or a building, but this is something I'm just padding up on, and that's what this court order I left in your packets was about. So with that, I will be back in next time to see you, and I'll have some estimates for you, and you guys can decide what you would like to do. So I'm just trying to do the order of job. O'Neil will be back first of May to start looking at yards in these buildings, too. Of course, I'll still be coming and giving the reports and all this, because it's a full-time job in itself, so. Anyway, have you got any questions from anybody? Brad?
On this tearing this building down from two thousand and ten, has that changed ownership at all?
No.
It's still a flux.
Yeah, it's, the owners, and we talked about this afternoon, there's one guy in town that probably owns thirty, forty properties, and they're all, maybe, I don't know, four or five of his properties are sold, and they're still decent places, but the rest of them are junk, dumps, everything else, and I have to do something with them, too. I don't expect to go out and tear every house down, but we try to put pressure on the mortgage companies, or the people who own them, to do something with them, and if they choose not to, and then all we do is put liens on the property and all this, and when something does happen with them, then they have to pay us whatever we did to them, whether we boarded them up or tear them down.
This property he's talking about was mortgaged through a local bank. The local bank washed their hands of it and sent the pure bill to the owner, and the owner has just walked away from it.
I was hoping it's been three years.
So they took about seventy grand on it, the bank did. And now it's got so bad that the neighbors are writing and complaining. It happens to border my property, so I don't want to take part in it. You guys make a decision next time we need to decide what you're going to do. I have a conflict of interest there because it borders me.
I can also bring some pictures in next meeting, too, to let you see what it is.
The windows are all out of that, and there are a lot of broken windows in there.
Yes, there is, and you got the address, you want to drive by it, and you can drive down the alley, you can see how bad a shape it's in. It's getting to be a hellhazier, or it's not beginning, it is a hellhazier, and somebody will get hurt in there.
The Delanies is not here tonight, you got your reality report.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you very much.
Transfer station.
The cost of the police last month, are you interested?
Yes, sir.
Two-hundred-and-forty-four thousand nine hundred and sixty dollars and eighty-one cents. Again, it was up a bit because of the three payday days.
Transfer station, Tom.
You have a report in front of you. Also, David's folks did the big trash last March twenty-fifth, twenty-sixth, and twenty-seventh, and they did a real good job, they got rid of fourteen and a half tons of waste. I really think this is working out best. I know Dave has some people that take advantage of the situation, but we always have had this in the past, and under the program he's doing, and now, the whole town doesn't look like Tobacco Road, just parked up.
John, hold me. Have a report.
Okay. Fourth month, I have fourteen hours, three minutes of meetings, which is quite a bit, and eight hours, thirty minutes of original programming. We also produce the State House access, we actually had State House two times last month, once for the State House access where we do the interviews with the representatives, as well as the bicentennial resolution. We take that and put it on there as well. Something that we were working on today, more cameras in the park, all the time where it's...
I got a note here, tell the thieves and crooks about the cameras in the park, because I'll be watching.
Specifically today, there are cameras on the new bathrooms outside, looking at the doors, looking at the parking, not inside, which will be clear, but I know that there's a lot of vandalism in that area, and I think this will solve this, because we'll see who's coming and going, so that should solve that problem.
Those cameras are so clear, you can see an ant on a straw.
It's real gross.
Would you like to quote me in the paper on that? And we have cameras, now, we have cameras watching the Roberts Building.
Are they easy to vandalize, the cameras themselves?
We have cameras watching the pavilion, we have cameras watching the restrooms, and we have cameras in numerous places where we're not going to say we got cameras.
They're mobile.
Mobile. And it's pretty hard to do some vandalism up there without seeing your face, and it's going to get more and more because we have more cameras going in, and we record these twenty-four hours a day.
Yes.
So I would say, if you're going to do destruction, I wouldn't do it in Roberts Park.
That's a reduced...
Oh, yes, yeah, it's cut it to almost zero.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
We'll see.
I think we've had one piece of vandalism this winter.
Yes.
And I'm not going to say what it is.
We've got plans to cover that area shortly, we're just waiting on some free time.
Okay.
It's your problem.
It has really done it.
Good.
Thank you, John. We had the privilege of meeting with Senator, United States Senator Coats's executive assistant this week, or last week she was in, and we visited all our major employees, and I want to give you some good news. SOFA is at a hundred and sixty-six employees. Four years ago, it was like sixty. A hundred employees up up there. GE is a hundred, three hundred and twenty-four. Over at Stance, we're up over three hundred. Everything is up, and every place we visited, they said they are trying to interview and get good employees. The turnover is somewhat harsh because of the drug problems. They'll interview maybe ten and be able to get two people because of the drug problems. It's rough. We don't want to tell our new company that because we've got hundreds of people available to go to work, but I was gotten, you and Don Weber, and selfie and some of the others.
No problem.
Anything under old business, anybody got to bring up?
Yeah, we talked, Connie and myself, and Sherry Rish, and Mike, and Kenny met about the trail, and I think Mr. Baker, did Kenny get you the deed?
Yeah, he did, he certainly did, right. Is Kenny still here, is he behind you?
If I'm not mistaken, it stated that we own that property.
It appears, yeah, if the city owns a part of the right-of-way, I can't tell, I can't ascertain, but by reading the survey on the deed, exactly what the length of the railroad right-of-way is owned by the city, it looks like it's considerable. And I thought it was originally connected with the construction of the expansion of Bark Road, and I thought that was the reason the state acquired the right-of-way, and then they later conveyed it to the city. But Kenny thinks it wasn't quite that way, so I'm going to have to look into it a little further, but nevertheless, it does appear the city owns substantial amount of the right-of-way.
And these here, are these pictures of it existing? Then Kenny's going to take some pictures of that, is that what that is, John?
Yeah, that's the trail, parts of it.
So this is city-owned property, and you can see how trash is, I really think we need to get that kind of thing picked up. And then you can see how rough that is.
Oh, I'd like to thank the committee for functioning. Right now, here's what we're up against. The grass is beginning to grow. We don't have enough staff to go up there and start to clear that. We would have to get volunteers like we did down at Smalley's. Maybe if things slow down in the summer, we're trying to get ready for the bicentennial, we could start clearing that.
Yeah.
We definitely got to find out we own it, John, before we start working on it. It certainly appears that we do. I'll talk to the surveyor to see if we determine exactly how far north.
If I'm not mistaken, it's seventy-five foot width in there.
Yeah, but, yeah, it may be the entire length of the right-of-way within the city limits. Mr. Burgess thinks it is, and that's possible, but I, but on the other hand, I can't understand why the state would have purchased that much of the right-of-way if it was, had to do with the building of the expansion of Bark Road. So that's a little tension there, I'm not quite sure how to resolve, but I'll look into it further. I'd like to keep the same committee and keep functioning here if you can. Your chair, Nettie, is that right? Or Connie?
I don't think everybody was...
Coop chair.
Mine was.
We call that teamwork again, teamwork.
Yeah, it was collectively decided that a cleanup would be, you know, would be good, and the homeowners shouldn't have a problem with that, you know, it would be to everybody's benefit.
I walked the whole thing today for the first time from start to finish.
How much cleanup is there, Mike?
There's a lot there. I'm more concerned right now with all the containers and tires holding water and mosquitoes. Kind of like get in there, at least get that stuff out of there, maybe we can do that when the kids all start back. There's quite a bit.
Can we go up there with the front end over and put that stuff in the bucket there? Can you get through there?
Not all the way through, but we, you can get through most of it. I mean, I was able to walk through, except in one area I had to walk to somebody's yard and go around, but I was able to walk through most of it, but there is a lot of containers.
Here, let's keep that under old business then. You and Connie are co-chairing it?
Sure.
Is that right, Connie?
Sounds good.
Sounds good to me. Working with the Parks Department, the Street Department, okay.
I want you to keep in mind what Gene Morey said, this committee. Keep in mind what Gene Morey said.
We're not even talking about that part right now, we're just focusing on that...
Cleaning it up, I understand.
Cleaning it up north, that straight piece.
See, the part that goes north has nothing to do with the airport, it's when they cross the airport.
Right.
And you're not, you're not working on that at any point.
Not yet.
Well, the state was to go west in time with County Route three, but northwards, they wouldn't have to plan.
Yeah, and actually, I think the county still has plans to go across that with the bypass, I believe.
Yes.
So...
And a bridge was needed for...
Yeah. Okay, I think, you okay with that, Dave? That's under old business, miscellaneous business, Nancy?
No.
Don?
Yes, I do. Saturday, last Saturday, the April thirteenth, the Connersville Boys Varsity Golf Team participated in a golf tournament at Richmond. Ten teams, top teams, and they won. The golf team is coached by Doug Fishesher and Brett Adams, they just do a great job, and the five young men that participated, and their scores, Evan Plum shot a seventy-eight, Jake Hackelman shot a seventy-nine, Chandler Crete shot an eighty-two.
I think it's in relation to...
I know it, I know it's that. Dalton Rosenberg shot an eighty-five, and Cody Wilson shot an eighty-five, and I just believe congratulations on north.
Absolutely. So they beat Richmond.
Again. Not that I like that.
Anytime you want to bring them all in here and honor them, we'd be glad to have them.
Thank you.
Debbie?
I don't have anything.
I've got some more from this. It's nice out, and we're getting ready to have our plant sell-off at the greenhouse And, uh, we're getting ready to have our plant sell-off at the, uh, greenhouse here for too long. I know we talked about that last meeting. I just want to let you guys know when that is. Uh, we're going to have it on May third at three forty-five to six thirty, um, PM.
Three forty, three forty-five?
Three forty-five.
But I can come at three.
Three forty-five. Or four forty-five.
Dave, is there nothing for people that are in the home?
We'll carry it out, we'll carry it out in the car. And then again on, uh, Saturday, uh, May fourth from nine AM to one.
It'll all be gone by then. You better get it three forty-five. I tell you, it's like, uh, Walmart grand opening when they...
They get moving.
I've been in that. Want those flowers? They whisper those flowers that I like.
Vinka.
Have a tortilla press.
Vinka.
That's a nice whisper.
Uh, colors do you have this year?
The, what, uh, vinka, oh, pink and like a dark, a dark purple with a little white center, very pretty. And they're starting to bloom now.
Can you order a head of that? You can't get the trail going, you can't do anything. I know, I know. Okay. Miscellaneous, you done with miscellaneous?
I'm done.
You got any miscellaneous?
No.
You got miscellaneous?
I have none, thank you.
Dr. Weber, you got miscellaneous?
I have a question. Anything with the legislation with the riverboat monies, dispersion of the...
We got that taken care of.
Don't even ask me that. Okay. Good, good. Thank you.
Thanks to a nice group and Connors will go in up there and testify in order of their hand.
It's fine.
We also won with John on his money. We win once.
Great. Good, good, thank you.
Connie?
Um, well, I really don't have a whole lot. I, I, um, uh, noticed that the street sign, or the school signs over on the east side were...
Been taken care of.
And, yeah, and it's been taken care of. They were, uh, off out of sequence.
So was A Street. They got it back in sequence.
And, uh, I just had a, um, just conveyed another message about street lights. Um, it's, it's nice out. People are walking out early and late and, so if you notice anything, just call, um, you know.
We turned in all street lights, uh, Duke Energy, uh, today, or, well, we sent it off and they, and they got it and they're going to be taken care of.
Okay.
I wonder if any of you noticed that the thirteen light poles on Main Street from Ninth to Third are being painted?
Yes.
We have an anonymous donor that's doing it on our behalf. And, uh, I, I'm not allowed to tell who it is.
That's nice.
Again, they won't let you tell, but it's, it's only being paid for on our behalf because of the bicentennial. That's nice. Uh, do you have anything on your report? Any questions on the, like, report?
She didn't give us one.
You didn't give any? They want some of that, it's telling.
We don't have any questions.
No questions. Well, Mary, you didn't ask me if I had anything.
I'm going to know this, you don't ever have anything. Yeah, Mary.
Have you got anything?
I only want to report to the county coun, or city council that the mayor is requiring me to work through my lunch hour now.
Donald's her day off, too.
Oh, yeah, and that, too, so I may ask for a raise. But otherwise, nothing said.
I tell you what, John, I'll recommend you get the same raise that Julie and I got. It's all zero. Six years we've worked at the same pay.
Hey, we'll give him another one of those.
I think this, the city council has worked at the same pay. Some of you for six years, some of you for two years, three years. Yeah. It's the honor. I'll take a motion to a journal unless you got something else. Did I miss anything at all?
Nope.
Take a motion to a journal?
You already did it.
I didn't hear it.
Nancy, me.
Hit that gavel, man.
I thought you had a vote to get all in favor.
All right.
Thank you. Good job.